The following program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
We will now begin the form for the West Bloomfield Township Library Board candidates. The candidates for West Bloomfield Library Board are Michael R. Dorfman, he is not in attendance and did not send a written statement, Karen Eichenmeyer, Carol A. Kravitz, Corey Neumer, Rhonda Barnes Orr, Ramon Singh, Jennifer Taylor Boykins, and Robert Tera. We will begin with a one-minute opening statement with Karen Eichenmeyer.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start by saying, telling you a little bit about myself. I've lived in West Bloomfield almost my whole life, other than my college years. I grew up in West Acres and spent a lot of my years, or a lot of time, at the West Acres branch of the library. I was the, my husband and I, after we got married, moved back to the area and live very near to the West Acres branch, so my, our children were able to spend a lot of time there also. So it's been a very big part of our life. I was a treasurer for the Friends of the Library for a number of years. I don't even know exactly how many, but it was a lot of years. And then have had the pleasure of serving on the board for the last several terms. And the library is very important to me and my family and the community, so that's why I'm pleased to serve.
And candidate Kravitz.
Hi, neighbors. I'm Carol Kravitz, and I've been with the library board for 16 years now. It seems unreal. I'm currently president of the Board of Trustees of the West Bloomfield Public Library, and I love working to support the library in any capacity. I also work with the Friends of the Library, every day processing book donations. So I'm at the library. I've been there through two children and four grandchildren, and I'm still there. So I value the library above all else. I think it's the heart of our community. I think that to support the library is to support the entire community, and I'm looking for your vote to remain on the library board. Thank you very much.
Candidate Neumer.
Hi, I'm Corey Neumer. I am running for the West Bloomfield Township Public Library Board. I grew up in Farmington Hills and have lived in West Bloomfield for seven years. I've worked in the library and museum field for over a decade now, including seven years at the West Bloomfield Library and three years at the Greater West Bloomfield Historical Society. I've also worked at the Detroit Historical Museum and the Henry Ford, and I'm currently working as a curator for the Detroit Red Wings. As a child, I thought the library was a magical place, and in my time working at the West Bloomfield Library, I saw firsthand what an important resource it is to the community. I'm running because I want to make sure the library continues doing what's been working, while also contributing new ideas and perspectives to provide additional value to the community. My for-profit experience has taught me that what works to provide the most value to the public, while my experience in nonprofit makes me familiar with how that can be applied to the library. This would provide unique insight to the library board. Thank you.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. I am Rhonda Barnes Orr, and I'm currently on the West Bloomfield Township Library Board, serving in the capacity of treasurer. I have been a resident of West Bloomfield since 1993 and have been a patron since that time. My husband, James, and I have been supporters of the Friends of the West Bloomfield Library since 1999. We spent our Saturday mornings taking our two children to the library. And as you enter the library, if you look down, you will see the paver recognizing them as great readers, Colin J. Orr and Megan E. Orr. When I retired in 2018 from General Motors after a 37-year career in finance, one of my first volunteer activities was with the Friends of the West Bloomfield Library, because I am an avid reader and enjoyed experiencing all of the resources the library has to offer. I have been on the Friends Board since 2019, so when presented with the opportunity to join the library board in October of 2023, I did not hesitate to devote my time to a place that I experienced so much joy since 1993. Thank you.
Candidate Singh.
Hello. My name's Ramon Singh, and I have lived in the district since 1989. I pretty much raised my children in that library. I love living in such a vibrant, diverse community. I'm really proud of our community, and I'm really proud of our, I'm really proud to serve and honored to serve on the library board as the secretary. I believe the library is really a hub of the community, almost a community center, and I really enjoy watching the library continue to evolve to try to serve the changing needs of our community. I'm really proud of such an award-winning library and really happy to work with a wonderful board and wonderful administration at the library.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
Good evening, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to speak, the CCTV and the West Bloomfield School District, and everyone that's here and everyone that's watching at home. Thank you so much for your support. I'm Jennifer Taylor Boykins, and I'm running for the library board. My life's work has centered around literacy and children's literacy, and I focus on ensuring that kids can see themselves in the books that they read. That's so important. And while they're seeing themselves, it's important that they see other experiences as well, because you not only should see yourself, but you should see what others are doing in the world too. Literature inspires children, helping them to really learn about themselves and the world. I've been a reader for so long, from a family of readers, and we have forever been diving into many, many books. And as such, I hold a degree in English and Journalism, and have taught in the Detroit Public Schools. I've also served as vice president for Scholastic, the largest publisher of children's books. And that, since that passion, it, stop, oh, I'm sorry, time's up. Okay.
Candidate Tara.
Okay. I'm Bob Tera. I have expertise in finance, technology, and management. I know how institutions work. Specifically, I have a lot of experience driving and overseeing libraries, getting it right. I served 10 years on the Birmingham Library Board, and I've been on the Oakland County Library Board forever. I've been president of both. What does our library need, which only I can bring to the table? I'd say this, I've been able to keep up with the world of libraries and technology. I've seen changes coming and helped my libraries bring in the practical ones, staying well ahead of the curve. I want to work with our board and our director to continue positioning ourselves to be able to bring changes in content, technology, and facility utilization as our patrons come to want those things.
Our next question will begin with Ms. Kravitz. What do you value or like best about the West Bloomfield Library and why?
I value most the staff. I value our director, who sets the tone for the library, and I value the physical building, actually, because when kids walk in, it's like it opens up to them, a whole new world. And our favorite thing to say is, when children leave, they don't want to go. They want to stay, and that's, that's the best thing about the library, is that they feel welcome, that they love it, and they want to come back.
Candidate Neumer.
I think I'll echo what Carol just said, but also, serving the community for seven years in the IT department and also the circulation department, I had a lot of interactions with the public. That was 95% of my day. And the variety of people that you meet at the library, who come in to do a variety of different things, that's, I think, what my favorite part is. It's, you know, for families, it's for couples. I met my husband there, actually, 12 years ago. And so the library's always been special to me for that reason, but also just all the different people and the different things that you can do there. That's something I value about the library.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
Excuse me. What I value about the library is the books that they have available, the technology to go and check out a book. I hear about a book, I can go sign into my account and say, this is the book I want, get an email and say, hey, the book is ready, and come and pick it up. But what I value is that I learn about those books from the suggestions made by our director, Kathy Russ. If you get the newsletter, you see the choice every month in it. We have the book talks conducted, excuse me, by the Friends of the West Bloomfield Library. And then we also have the authors who come to talk. One of the favorite authors that I had was Amol, I'm not going to say what, A.M.O.L. Tolles, A Gentleman in Moscow, outstanding book. And I never would have had that on my list to read if it had not been suggested by the library. So that is what I value, and then I value my interaction with the community at the book talk discussions.
Candidate Singh.
I value everything that they've talked about. I think the books are only the beginning at the West Bloomfield Library. There's something for everyone, music and things to watch, and DVDs, and technology, and fellowship, and community, and almost everybody in the West Bloomfield community crosses paths at the library. And if you want a book in a physical form, you can get it. If you want it on your phone or on your electronic device, you can get it. If you, as you said, if you want suggestions, you can get it. You can stream. I mean, it's endless. I think that the West Bloomfield Library is not award-winning for, for no reason. It's, it's something for everybody. I have friends who come in from other parts of Oakland County and all over Metro Detroit, and they're like gobsmacked when they walk into our library, because it really is an amazing place.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I really have benefited so much from the staff at the West Bloomfield Libraries. I have five grandchildren, and my daughter, my granddaughter is always with me going to the library, and it is amazing, the things that she can do and play with and see while she's there. So I have loved the knowledge of the staff. They've been able to recommend a million different things to interest her. And we've been taking home those little puzzle kits that she can put together, and when she gets home, she's just super excited to do that. So it's just been a wonderful experience, really. There is nothing that I've looked for that I haven't been able to find, and if I can't find it, they can order it. So it's been a wonderful experience with the West Bloomfield Libraries, and I will just keep going on a regular basis to experience the good things that happen there.
Candidate Tara.
Our library is physically inviting and easy to use, not intimidating. In my experience at the DIA and other institutions, I find that minorities and ethnic people are, I mean, ethnic groups, members of other non-white European background ethnic groups, are often intimidated by institutions. And we are not, we are not intimidating. We encourage our populations to come here and stay here and come back again. I love that.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Yeah, that's, this is a hard question to be the last one to answer, because everybody said so many good things. But I think the thing I love the most is the children's programs and the love of reading that, just being in our libraries, both of them, that it instills in children, and it instills just a love of reading and a love of knowledge. And I think it's a great way for parents to bring their kids to the programs, grandparents to bring their kids, older siblings. I just think it's grabbing the children and making them lifetime learners and readers.
The next question will begin with candidate Neumer. The West Bloomfield Library Board is the only governing public board in the township that currently does not televise its meetings. Would you advocate for the openness and transparency that comes with publicly televised meetings? Why or why not?
I would support that. I think that there, especially since the pandemic, we've seen a large rise in virtual programming. I was part of that when I worked at the Historical Society, and we found that it was very beneficial, especially to people who were physically unable to make it to the building. So I think that that would allow more people to attend if desired, and I think it would further include more, more of the community at large, and just give people the option to join if they're physically unable.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
Yes, I would support having the meetings televised. The library is the community's. We're transparent. Our meetings are notified so that you have the opportunity to participate. Each meeting has time on the agenda for the public to attend, so we are here for the public. And if the public wants to hear the discussions firsthand versus reading the minutes, yes, I would fully support that.
Candidate Singh.
Yes, I think that if the public wants that and there's support and need for it, why not? You know, as we said, I think we live in a digital environment or a virtual environment. If there's, if, we should meet the public, meet the community where they are.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
So I would support, support that, because I believe in transparency, but I also would need to understand why aren't the meetings televised now? There's a good reason for that, so I'd like to probe a little further and understand that, and then be able to talk amongst the board members to determine what's next. But if the public does demand that, I think it's a good thing to be transparent and be available for them in any venue that they need.
Candidate Tara.
Yeah. I'm very much aware of the Open Meetings Act and the intent of it and the mechanisms of it, and televising the meetings is, would be consistent with the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. I have found in practice that many community members don't particularly care to pay attention to the meetings, and this is a reality. I would be in favor of looking at the degree of genuine interest in the community before deciding to do that. I'd also be wanting to look at what it would cost the library and what benefit that would bring, but certainly I would be open to it.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Absolutely. I agree, though. We would, I think it would be important to understand what the community interest was and the cost to, to do that, to televise them, but we have nothing to hide. It would be, it would be great.
Candidate Kravitz.
I would want to know what the public wants. We have open meetings, and people are invited to come to our meetings in person, and there's time allotted for comments from the public. So it's not like we haven't made it available, we just haven't seen the desire for televising our meetings.
This next question will begin with candidate Barnes Orr. Do you believe the current services for seniors is sufficient? If not, what would you recommend?
Well, I hate to admit this, but I am a senior. And the, the resources, like I ventured earlier, that I utilize is, if there's a book I want, I can sign into my account, and it is very easy to sign into the account, select the book, put it on hold, receive an email that the book is ready, go into the lobby, pick up the book, the checkout terminal is right there. So that is one way that I think we are very open for the seniors. If you look at the programs that we have available, they are for the youth, but they are also for the seniors. So I think that the library is open to all needs of the community.
Candidate Singh.
I'm really proud of our outreach librarians as well. They go into local resident facilities and, and have book programming there. And I just got my Parks and Rec flyer yesterday, and they're holding, they just are starting a book discussion group right at Connect, and you can pick up your book right there. So it's just amazing. I was actually telling my parents about it today. So I think that, I feel like we have a lot of programming for seniors, both in the library and moving out into the community for them. And I feel like our outreach librarians are always thinking about new and innovative ways to engage our aging population.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I feel the operational side of the library is just magnificent. So whomever is checking in and out, it's an easy check-in and out process. It's really seamless for anybody, any age, and just the openness of the library, the available rooms to sit in and talk. Sometimes seniors may need those smaller rooms to gather and have planning sessions. So I think the availability of rooms, the books that are on target, the programs, and the in-and-out, check-in-and-out system is just outstanding.
Candidate Tara.
I give our library an A+ for services to seniors and also to young people, to students, and to any other group you can think of. We have a fabulous library and a fabulous staff.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Oh, yeah. I think, I also agree that we do a really good job. My mother is 89, and she's an avid, avid library user, and I can't say enough about how kind the staff is to her and how helpful they are to her. So in addition to all the programs we have, just the staff is, is amazing when, when dealing with everybody, but it's especially nice to see them so kind to my mother.
Candidate Kravitz.
Well, we have programs for little ones, and we have programs for the older ones. The more mature, Club Connect does book talks all the time. They're always the librarians, our outreach to both the Jewish Center and all the facilities there, and Club Connect, and like they say, our, our sign-out policy is bar, bar none. It's the best. And no late fees.
Candidate Neumer.
I, I can agree with every, everything that the other candidates have said. I, I know that the dedicated outreach librarians are very valued in the community, especially when they visit the different resident centers. And I also wanted to mention something that I don't think was mentioned before, but there's a homebound program for folks that physically aren't able to leave their homes, and we, there's a program that allows them to still check out materials, would have them sent directly to their homes, so they can still feel a part of the library while not physically being there, and I think that's very important, too. And then also, the, this new-ish partnership with West Bloomfield Parks. I think the connection between nature and also literacy is very important, especially to, to seniors, and, and I think that that's something that should continue.
The next question will begin with candidate Singh. As a board member, what are your thoughts on banned books? And how would you ensure our community has access to all books?
We work really closely with the library staff, director, and I think we have wonderful policies in place, that we're always reviewing the policies to make sure that they reflect the needs of the community and they reflect the current, you know, state of, any kind of issue that's coming up. So I think that the policies on books and book reviews is really strong. And it also allows, if, for anybody who has a concern to bring it up. So we don't want to silence the community either, obviously. If they have a concern about any material or any book at the library, they should be able to bring it up through the, in a respectful, in a way that is aligned with the policies. So I think by keep, by enforcing policies, by keeping open communication with the, with the community is the best way to continue to have access to everything the community needs.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I feel that banning books should be, of course, voices should be heard, but I think it should be left up to the families and, and, you know, to decide what they want to do. If their kids want to read certain books and the families are okay with it, then that should be all right. I feel like if we ban too many books, and sometimes people are banning books for no good reason, voice it, but then be able to accept the decision that comes along with that. Families can make their own minds up about what books their kids could read, and I think that's the most important thing when it comes to that issue.
Candidate Tara.
Ecclesiastical and moral authorities should speak to their own communities, and those communities can honor the wishes of their leaders. Likewise, parents, I would think, should be the monitors of what their children read. It is not the business of the library to dictate what people should read.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
I, I agree with what was just said. I don't think it's our job. I think it's up to the parents what their children should read, and as adults, I think we can all decide what we should read or want to read, and so I am, I'm not supportive of book banning.
Candidate Kravitz.
We have policies and procedures in place for review. If people want to submit written remarks about a book, if their concerns are genuine, we take them up at our meetings and we review them. So I think that mostly, we have professional librarians that review the materials, and we take into consideration what the public has to say in regards to that. But there is a policy and there is a procedure.
Candidate Neumer.
I think, you know, the library is a place for everyone, regardless of background or race or religion, and I think that, you know, as has been stated by all the other candidates, the library is not, the job of the library is not to determine what you read or, or who should read what. The choice is up to the individual and up to the families, so I, I don't support book banning either. And I think that, as candidate Kravitz said, policies are in place, and the librarians and the staff are, are there for a reason. It's their job to curate the collection and make everything available to the public. And if a member of the community has a, has an issue, then they should voice it. But the, the library board, their job isn't to determine what should go in the library. That's up to the librarians and the other staff.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
As we have stated, you know, the library is for the community, and we have an outstanding relationship with the community. Determining what books is available at the library is at the, the library director and the staff determines the book. With the library being a public, public library, it is covered by aspects of the First Amendment. So our role as the board is to ensure that we have a director and staff that is community, that is connected to the community and is able to select the books that the community wants to read. If the community has a problem, as has been stated, we have a policy in place where the individual would go to the director, they would review it and bring it to the board, and then we would have a discussion on it. But with being a public library, we are open to the public, and we follow all rules and guidelines and policies in place.
The next question will begin with Taylor Boykins. How do you plan to continue improving youth programming in conjunction with the West Bloomfield School District, including preschool program classes and classes outside of the library?
First, I think the library does a great job in providing preschool materials and reading times and all of those kinds of things that give them social engagement as well as literacy. I do think it's important, though, for us to all think about how AI is impacting education. I think with AI now playing such a dominant role in everybody's day and thinking about it, wondering how to operationalize it, wondering how it remains ethical, we need to understand how kids engage with AI. I think that's one of the most important things that we could think about for the future of education, is how we engage and how we make sure that it's the right kind of engagement for our kids, social media period, but AI definitely.
Candidate Tara.
This is a subject which is the responsibility of our management and staff. It's not a matter of policy, and the library board shouldn't have nothing to do with it.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
So to the question, I actually... So to the question, I actually, we actually live in the Wald Lake School District, so I guess I would hope that whatever the programs are, they reach to all the school districts that are covered by the area of the West Bloomfield Library. But I do think we do a great job. I don't think, or I believe there's always room for improvement, but I can't think of anything actually specifically that I would suggest. I think, again, we have great staff, they have great ideas, they're always thinking of new things. And I think our job as a board is to just encourage them and listen to and endorse their ideas as they come up.
Candidate Kravitz.
You know what? It's been kindergarten time at the library. So the kindergartners have been going through. We make the library accessible to all ages. And our work with the schools, there's programming for every grade level, really. And it keeps enhancing every year. We've got a 3D printer, and they've been using that. I don't know about AI, but I know that the kids are in the library, and there are programs for them from the very youngest to the very oldest.
Candidate Nummer.
I think that the youth programming is very important. I think it's also very robust. In just the time that I was there, I saw it grow, and I saw we introduced activity kits to the library collection. And I think, actually, one of the candidates mentioned those before, but there's a very robust education or programming in the youth department. And I think that it's the job of the library board to support the continuing education of the youth staff, because that's who's making the decision for the programming and creating those programs and enhancing the collection. So I think the library board's role in this, to answer the question, the library board's role is to continue to support the youth staff in those endeavors.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
The library board's responsibility is to support the staff, and the staff has done an outstanding job, in my opinion, in working with the schools. With the summer programs we have, we have the summer reading program. This summer, we had a speech and learning program. We also have the play-away books for the kids, for our audiobooks, because kids learn in different ways. And then we also had mobile hotspots. So when the kids went on vacation up north, they were able to take a mobile hotspot if they needed. So I think with the programs that the staff has put in place, we are working well with the school district, and it is the board's responsibility to continue to support the programs that the library wants to have in place for the community.
Candidate Singh.
I'm going to echo what everybody else says. I think that we're doing a great job at the library, partnering with the school district as well as many other of the organizations throughout West Bloomfield. I may date myself a little, but I remember coming to the library when my kids had pine tree books and then rap books and then high school books. So I think that creating that kind of welcoming environment where kids start to think about going to the library right away from a very young age, whether it's bring-in programming or go out, our library currently comes to the middle school for programming and for video gaming, I guess, or something. And so I think the young library staff is right, I mean, the youth library staff is right on it as far as what our kids need, as far as bringing them into the library, making it a welcoming environment, and pushing out into the schools. So I'm excited.
This question will begin with candidate Tara. In your opinion, what are the top priorities for the library board?
Well, the responsibilities of the library board are policy, finances, and hiring and monitoring the director, who is in charge of the rest of the staff. The policies of the library board, I don't need any changes at this point that I'm aware of. The only thing I would look at is the looking into the future, being aware of changes in the world of libraries outside of us. So that would be a matter of the continuing education of the library board. So that's where I would put that.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Yeah, I think we've got a few things that may not be totally within our responsibility, but the things we're focused on or that we should focus on. Number one is the millage we've got coming up. So, and I realize that will be decided before the new board takes its place, but that, I think, our aging buildings, our buildings are 25 years old. So we've got to focus on how are we going to shore them up and make sure that they are secure and up to date and everything. And then I just think, you know, libraries are changing so much in the last, I don't know, 10 years, 15 years with eBooks and audiobooks. So just what does the library of the future look like? And how do we make sure that West Bloomfield Township Library gets there and stays the amazing place that it is right now?
Candidate Kravitz.
Well, you mentioned the millage. Our roof in both libraries are 25 years old, so that's something we are looking into. Our primary responsibility is fiduciary. It's, we've worked on reupholstering chairs rather than replacing them. We've worked on resurfacing and taking care of the wood so that we're not replacing so much as we're maintaining. But that's our primary responsibility, is taking a look at specs for improvement in the building and deciding what companies we go with and what we do to preserve the buildings.
Candidate Nummer.
The top priority of the board, like candidate Kravitz said, is fiduciary. So that's managing the budget and making sure that the library is being fiscally responsible with the community funds that they receive in the millage. But also making sure that the library has the most value in programs and activities in addition to the collection. But the programming I've seen is what draws people into the buildings. And, you know, like I said before, the library, the collaboration with West Bloomfield Parks to bring people in and outdoors, though, that's very important, and I think the board's continued support of that is very important. And also, the different facility resources, like additional study rooms, nursing rooms, gaming tables, and all of those things have been requested over the years. And I think that the board supporting community outreach to see what the community actually wants and supporting that is also important.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
The number-one responsibility of the board is to hire the director. And I think the last board did an outstanding job with the current director that we have. And with that, once you have a great director, you have a great staff, and then you have a library that is inviting to everyone. So in addition to that, you know, with our fiduciary responsibilities, our budget, our finances, we need to look at that. That is our responsibility to ensure that the millage money coming in, all of the funds, is being spent appropriately. As was mentioned, we have aging facilities. We are reviewing all of the proposals that we have, selecting the best ones, and making sure that the changes and the updates that we are making to the building, it is what the community needs. If you have not been to the reflection room, you should stop in there. It is outstanding. It is worth your time to go there. But when you go, take your book, take your quilt or your knitting, whatever it is that you want to do. But I think that's our primary responsibility, as well as ensuring that the policies are updated.
Candidate Singh.
I'll echo what my fellow candidates have said. Yeah, we review the financial statements each month in our board packets and at the board meetings. And I'm really actually very proud of partnership between the board and the library staff and administration as far as the financial stewardship. The library is in a great financial position, and I'm also really proud to support the millage renewal, because I think that that will pave the way for continued excellence at our library. And a wonderful library like ours, I think, really attracts people to the community. I'm also proud, as other people have mentioned, about how we, when we look at budgets, it's based on a strategic plan, and that strategic plan and vision is based on community needs and assessments. So the library is constantly evolving, whether it's its collection or its infrastructure to meet those community needs. So I'm really thrilled to be a part of this board.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I feel fiscal responsibility is the main part of what the board should do. I also understand that there are so many great things happening, supporting those great things that are already happening, and finding ways to engage to continue those great things is really important, such as the millage, repelling and replacing. So we know those things are going to be the most important to the future of the library, and also understanding what are some of the things that are coming around the corner that we can't see and exploring that, having conversations with other people about how important that is and bringing it back to the body.
The next question will begin with candidate Eichenmeyer. Currently, many universities have online classes. However, the library policy prioritizes having more than one student in a study room. Would you support single student, a single student using study rooms?
I would support it if our, if the facility we have, if the number of rooms we have would support that. I understand that, you know, there might be a desire for single study rooms, but if we don't have enough to accommodate that, I guess we would need to look at that. I think that the library is generally a quiet place, so I would need to understand the question and why single studiers can't find a place in the library that isn't in a closed room.
Candidate Kravitz.
Well, we have multiple room facilities available. Some of them are single, some of them are double, and some of them are for small groups. We also have the community commons room, which will accommodate a larger group. But as far as, we have policies in place for using, for one person using a room, and there are time limits on that, as long as if someone is waiting for it. If no one's waiting for it, then one person can use the room. It's not like we limit it.
Candidate Nummer.
I think I would support a single-use study room if the, if it warrants it. I think that the board would have to rely on the library, the front-end staff, the librarians, and who manage the study rooms on a daily basis, to see what the need is and how often single-use rooms are requested. And then if it's so often that the current space can't support that anymore, then looking into, you know, what we could do to expand, you know, create more single-use study rooms to accommodate that need. But I think, you know, starting with a conversation or a committee with the front-end staff is, I think, the most important.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
I think that we would have to determine if the facility had the accommodations to do that. But I think as you look around the library, there is a lot of space for an individual to sit. And I'm assuming that if they're there taking their classes, they're going to have their headset on, which would be quiet, and most times during that class, they're going to listen with limited talking on their part. And there are some areas of the library where you can have quiet talking, but I think that the main point is just seeing what the need is and then talking to the facility to see what can be accommodated.
Candidate Singh.
Yes, I agree. I think that the library staff and director are always monitoring the policies surrounding the study rooms. In fact, on tomorrow's board agenda, we have, we're going to be looking at a modification to one of the policies on the study room. So I think we would have to leave it to the staff that's constantly there and kind of seeing what the requests, what the needs are of the community again. And I think we can make adjustments based on their recommendations.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I believe it's always a capacity issue, but I think the staff could determine that. But if there is capacity, there should be no problem with it. But again, leaning to the staff to make those determinations.
Candidate Tara.
If the question were phrased as one of policy, I would be able to address it. It's not a matter of policy. It's up to the staff.
For the last question, we will begin with candidate Kravitz. What steps do you think the library needs to take in order to stay relevant for all residents, young and old?
Do survey all the time. We have surveys at the library, and we do survey the public for what needs there are and what they'd like to see in the library. It's up to us to continue to support the community's needs along with the library's needs.
Candidate Nummer.
I was also going to mention the surveys. I think that speaking to the community and finding what they need or want is the most important and most valuable way that the library can stay relevant, not just determining what goes in the collections, but also what programs are available and what outreach is available. And I think that continuing to do those surveys, you know, the board does actually review them. When I worked at the library, we conducted a number of surveys, and the increase in study rooms actually resulted from those surveys a number of years ago. So I think those are very valuable, and I think that's something that, you know, would continue to serve the community.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
I think we would continue to look at the data that we get, because we get data about the traffic that we have at the library every month, the number of people coming in, the number of books that are checked out, the number of media, the number of rooms. I think we would just continue to look at that data to notice any trends that may be alarming to us, and then continue with the surveys that we have, so that we are getting the information from the community, what the community wants to see in their library.
Candidate Singh.
I feel that the library is always open to the community for suggestions and for, again, the surveys that everybody has mentioned. And I feel like it's just a dynamic place. It's not something that seems static, based on policy, based on collection, based on taking input from the community as well as from the staff. I feel like the library is always striving to remain relevant by, you know, being aware of the needs of the community.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
I think the library does a phenomenal job in understanding the needs of the community. I know I've asked for different things, and all I had to do was ask, and it was given. And I know that many others feel the same way. So I think just realizing that all the resources that you need are there and staying on the cutting edge by listening to others, reading the surveys, understanding how to get more of the surveys from all the users, because sometimes it's key people that fill out the surveys and not, you know, you don't go deep enough. But getting that other amount of surveys in that could really give you some evaluation of where people are and what the needs are.
Candidate Tara.
I would defer to President Kravitz's answers, but I would add that we do have an ongoing process for surveys. And I would look for a more robust outreach program if our surveys indicated we were not doing a good enough job on that.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Well, I'll echo the surveys, but I also think it's important to see what is happening with libraries outside of our area, just nationally, internationally. You know, what is, what are the trends? What other, what ideas do other libraries have that we might not have thought of yet? So I think it's important to look outside just our area.
Well, this concludes the time for questions for the school board. The candidates will now be given one minute for a closing statement in the reverse order of opening statements, beginning with Robert Tara.
Thank you. I take a long view of libraries from Babylon through Andrew Carnegie up to the present and looking into the future. I love physical books, although I do use eBooks and audio as well. At Baldwin, I spearheaded a $20 million, many-year program to rebuild the library. And in fact, at the Oakland County Library, I was involved in the reconstruction of a new library building. I have a long history in library management. I have a long history of, in library management and direction, and I have a robust outlook to the future. I look at other libraries in other parts of the country and the world, and I bring a lot of ideas to bear. Thank you.
Candidate Taylor Boykins.
As technology evolves and our community demographics shifts, it's crucial that we stay ahead in understanding what the community needs and making those changes and adjusting to serve in new and meaningful ways. Our libraries are more than just places for books. They are hubs of empowerment, offering safe, welcoming spaces for people of all ages to learn, grow, and thrive. It's important that we all remember to vote yes on the proposal to repeal and replace the 2024 millage. This will ensure our West Bloomfield libraries continue to run smoothly and professionally. And I want to also, once again, thank the League of Women Voters, CCTV, the West Bloomfield School District, and to all of you who are here, please remember to vote on or before November 5th. And early voting starts October 26th through November 3rd. And I ask you to vote for me, Jennifer Taylor Boykins, for the library board trustee. Thank you.
Singh.
I have been involved in my community since I moved to West Bloomfield. I'm committed to the schools, I'm committed to, to service clubs in the district. And I've been a business owner as well as a, I'm an executive with a nonprofit. I'm really proud of our diverse community. I'm proud to bring people together. And I'm really excited to, to have the opportunity to, again, serve on the library board. So I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Candidate Barnes Orr.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to introduce myself as a candidate for the West Bloomfield Township Public Library Board. I am running for a position on the board because my family and I have experienced the educational, personal enlightenment, and community inclusion programs provided by the library. If elected, I will dedicate myself to ensuring that these programs continue so that the community may experience what I have experienced. I will utilize my financial skills to support the library finance staff to ensure the continued outstanding financial reporting as evidenced by the last audit. Given the library's mission to serve all sectors of the community, I will provide input to ensure the library programs evolve as the community changes, as it has since I started patronizing in 1993. I would appreciate your vote for the November 5th election. So remember, Rhonda Barnes Orr. Thank you.
Candidate Nummer.
I'd like to thank the League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum and for inviting me to speak. I'm excited for the opportunity to run and, for the West Bloomfield Library Board. And if elected, I'll continue to serve the, the community, just in a different capacity than what I used to. And I, I didn't leave the library because I wanted to. It was arguably my favorite job that I have ever had. And that was because of the community that I served and the, the people that I worked with. And I, I would love the opportunity to continue doing that in a different way. So please vote for me, Corey Nummer, for the library board. Thank you.
Candidate Kravitz.
My pleasure to announce that next week, the West Bloomfield Township Public Library is going to be awarded the Citation of Excellence from the Library of Michigan Department of the State of Michigan, one of two public libraries in the state, to receive that award. And I'm proud to have been part of the board that achieved that. Please vote for me, Carol A. Kravitz, for the library board. Thank you.
Candidate Eichenmeyer.
Great news. Very good news. As I mentioned before, I've lived in West Bloomfield for, I'll, I'll date myself, over 60 years. Been a library user for most of, or a lot of those years. I've been on the Friends of the Library Board for over 20 years and for the last several years serving on the board. Our library is a jewel. It's a cornerstone of our community. And I think it's really important that, that we continue to have the leadership we've had. So I would ask you to vote for me, Karen Eichenmeyer, on November 5th. Thank you.
The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and Civic Center TV for making this forum possible. For further information that is nonpartisan on these candidates, you can visit vot411.org. That's vot411.org. When available, the video of this forum will be on LWVOA.org's website. The video is copyrighted, Legal Women Voters, copyrighted by the Legal Women Voters and must be used in its entirety. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open, and any concerned resident can become active with our organization. And we accept contributions. Anyone over the age of 16 is eligible to be a member. And please remember, in-person early voting begins October 26th and is through November 3rd. Or you can vote at your precinct on November 5th. And always remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. Good evening.[1773.91][1773.91]